Good evening and welcome to the November 20th, 2024 meeting of the Roseville City Council. I'll request the city clerk call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernisconie.
Here.
Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Kuchi.
Here.
And Mayor Haldishell.
Here. Leading us in the pledge this evening is a gentleman I met at when Big Boy came to Roseville in July and son of John Walsh, Liam Walsh. Would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. City clerk, will you announce the meeting procedures?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Roseville City Council meeting. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table to your right or online on our city's website. All comments from the public should be directed to our city council and not to any staff member or the audience. All speakers must speak from podium as this meeting is being recorded tonight. For items appearing on the agenda, I'm sorry, not appearing on the agenda, members of the public may address the city council regarding any item not listed on tonight's agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of our city council. Public comment is limited to 25 minutes for the first segment, and each speaker will have three minutes to address the city council. And this time limitation is reached in the first segment, individuals will have a second opportunity at the end of the meeting just prior to council comments to express and make comments again. The Brown Act does prohibit our city council from discussing, debating, or taking action on items that are not listed on tonight's agenda. For items appearing on the agenda, speakers will have five minutes to provide input that should be relevant to the item that is being considered tonight. Time will be monitored, and once the red light begins to flash at the podium, we ask that the speaker please conclude their comments. Lastly, if addressing the city council tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. With that, we thank you for your civic participation tonight and welcome to the City of Roseville.
So we'll start the evening with public comments on items that are not on the agenda. Anybody have a comment? Nick?
Okay, I wanted to ask you guys this question. I am seeing vehicles speeding down on my street on Dresler Way, on Country Club. It's probably the worst intersection to have a bus stop there, to be having cars speeding, flying by, having people walking their dogs, and people are just... All I'm seeing, I'm seeing nothing but cars speeding. I'm getting tired of people speeding and this be a problem when you're going to drive me is a problem. And I want to give out a shout out to our law enforcement, doing a great job patrolling the streets. But I do want to say that if people are going to be going to a bar, restaurant, take Uber Lyft, or you can use public transit. Don't drink and drive. Take the bus or light rail. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Anyone else with public comment on non-agenda items? All right, with that, we'll move into our agenda, and we'll start with resolutions. Resolution 7.1, Creekview Community Facilities District Number One.
Consent calendar.
Oh, well, there you go. I was trying to get out at 7:15, so let's try to do the consent calendar then.
Mr. Mayor, all matters on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one motion of the city council. There will be no discussion on consent calendar items unless a member of the city council staff or a member of the public requests that a specific item be pulled for further discussion. At this time, neither council or staff has made such a request. Is there any member of the public that would like to pull an item for further discussion tonight? Okay. I see no one coming up, Mr. Mayor, and with that, the city council will consider consent calendar items 6.1 through 6.15. May I please have a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernisconie.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldishell.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Now, you ready for minvo?
No.
Now, we'll go to resolutions. 7.1, Creekview Community Facilities District Number One, Improvement Area Number Two, Series of Series 2024 Bond Issuance and Staff Presentation from Assistant City Manager and CFO Dennis Coffin.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Haldishell and council members. The purpose of this agenda item is to authorize the issuance of bonds for the Creekview Community Facilities District Number One, Improvement Area Number Two. For a little bit of background, the purpose of establishing a community facilities district or CFD on the next slide is to create a land secured financing tool to fund construction and acquisition of authorized facilities or services, things like infrastructure. This particular district was formed in November of 2019. The Improvement Area Number Two was annexed into the district in July of 2022, and the maximum authorized indebtedness allocated to the second improvement area is $111 million. The maximum authorized debt for this series of bonds is $17 million, and this is the second series of bonds issued in Improvement Area Two. The authorized facilities that can be financed with the bonds are listed on this slide and include transportation improvements, including portions of Westbrook and Blue Oaks Boulevard, as well as utility infrastructure and park and open space improvements. The initial boundaries of the district were formed south of the creek. The yellow highlighted area on this map shows the area north of the creek, which is the future annexation areas, including Improvement Area Number Two. Recommendation tonight from staff is to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds for Creekview Community Facilities District Number One, Improvement Area Number Two, and approving all of the related actions and documents, including the form of the preliminary official statement, which is the document that's used to market the bonds. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions?
No.
I'll open it for public comment. Close public comment, and unless the council has any questions or comments, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 7.1, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 24391, a resolution authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds for and on behalf of Improvement Area Number Two of the City of Roseville, Creekview Community Facilities District Number One, otherwise described as public facilities, and approving and directing the execution of a supplemental agreement to fiscal agent agreement and a bond purchase agreement, and approving the form of preliminary official statement, and approving the sale of such bonds, and approving other related documents and actions. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with our second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernisconie.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yep.
Councilmember Kuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldishell.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Next, we'll go to special request reports and presentations and a recap of our priority legislation signed or vetoed by the governor for in 2024 with our government relations administrator, Mark Walensky. And Etol. Mark Walensky, Etol.
Good evening, Mayor Haldishell and council members. Once again, I'm Mark Walensky, the city's government and community relations manager. As you know, the advocacy work of the government relations team is a year-long effort that engages both Congress and the state legislature. The team is led by Deputy City Manager Megan Shide, and the team members joining me for tonight's presentation include Rob Bakera, Government and Community Relations Manager, Amber Blix, Electric Utility Government Relations Administrator, and Noel Matic, Environmental Utilities Government Relations Administrator. I'd also like to recognize the remaining members of the team, Chris Marrow with the Electric Department and Sarah Starr with the Environmental Utilities Department. Tonight's presentation provides an overview on priority bills that the governor has signed or vetoed and that the government relations team has tracked and advocated on during the legislative session. The bills we're presenting tonight focus primarily on priority legislation that has implications for the following city departments or divisions: planning, housing, city attorney, police, fire, building, electric, and environmental utilities. By way of background, to recap the outcome of this year's legislative session, the legislature introduced 2,531 bills between the two houses, 1,729 in the Assembly and 802 in the Senate. The legislature worked right up to the midnight deadline of August 31st to complete the chaotic final week of the legislative session. A total of 1,206 bills advanced to Governor Newsom's desk. The governor had until September 30th to act on legislation. This year, he signed 1,017 bills and vetoed 189. By comparison, last year, he signed 890 bills and vetoed 156. It's important to note that the legislature can override vetoes if the bill's backers can win two-thirds majorities in both the Assembly and Senate. This doesn't happen often, and in recent decades, it almost never has. Moving on with regarding to planning, zoning, housing, and redevelopment legislation, we present three bills, all that were signed by the governor. Assembly Bill 98, this bill will limit new or expanded logistic use developments and warehouses on existing and rezoned industrial sites within 900 feet of sensitive receptors. The city opposed this gutnahmen bill that was introduced the last week of the legislative session. While the bill intentions are aimed at addressing air quality-related concerns adjacent to warehouse operations, this bill is problematic because it includes stringent requirements that could severely impact the ability for local jurisdictions to approve this type of development based on unique geographic and community characteristics, and could stifle economic and workforce development in their communities. Assembly Bill 1782, this bill will increase the amount that a housing successor agency may expand on homeless prevention and rapid rehousing services from $250,000 to $500,000. The city supported this bill for the additional funding that a successor agency could spend from their low and moderate income housing asset fund on homelessness prevention and rapid rehousing. This bill will allow the city to use the funds in this account to provide more funding to help prevent homelessness and offer essential services to the homeless. The city currently uses these funds toward homeless prevention and rapid rehousing to provide temporary assistance to prevent a household from losing permanent housing and/or in obtaining permanent housing. Eligible services can also include temporary rental assistance, short-term hotel vouchers, housing relocation, and stabilization services, as well as other programs and services. And then finally, Senate Bill 1037. This bill will create new legal remedies that can be used by the Attorney General to enforce the adoption of housing element revisions or to enforce any state law that requires a local government to ministerially approve any decision or application for a housing development project. The city opposed this bill for the fines that ultimately could be levied against a local government for being out of compliance with their housing elements and for the requirement that the penalty is automatic without an opportunity to cure. In addition, the bill does not consider whether a city is acting in good faith. Under existing law, cities can be subjected to significant fines and penalties for violating certain housing laws. However, before fines are imposed, a city can take corrective action. Enhanced fines are not imposed unless a city or a county fails to follow a court order or acts in bad faith. This bill reverses this opportunity to cure before a penalty is imposed. And with respect to an emergency regulation regarding hemp products, although this wasn't an action taken by the governor on legislation, this item addresses a request from the city council several months ago that staff bring back information related to possible action that the state or federal government might take regarding hemp products. In early September, Governor Newsom issued a proposed emergency regulation prohibiting intoxicating hemp products and imposing other requirements for manufacturing and selling non-intoxicating hemp products. The regulations will essentially bring the sale of legal hemp products more in line with restrictions currently seen for adult-use marijuana, including limitations on serving and packaging sizes, and establishing a minimum age to legally purchase industrial hemp, food, beverage, and dietary products. The regulations proposed by the California Department of Public Health strengthen California's ability to stop the peddling of intoxicating hemp products to California's children. The new regulations require that industrial hemp, food, beverage, and dietary products intended for human consumption have no detectable THC or other intoxicating cannabinoids per serving. They create a minimum age to purchase hemp products to 21 and limit the number of servings of hemp products to five per package. And now I'd like to turn the presentation over to Rob Bakera, who will cover police, fire, and building legislation.
Thank you, Mark. As Mark mentioned, I'll be covering three bills tonight, and these three bills were chosen because they lay out and represent larger themes that we saw in the legislation this cycle related to law enforcement, fire, and building. The first is AB 1802, Crimes at Organized Theft. The intent of this bill is to increase penalties and provide law enforcement with additional tools to combat organized theft rings, particularly in retail theft. It seeks to improve coordination between law enforcement agencies and boosts efforts to prevent and punish large-scale theft operations. Organized theft is a significant issue in Roseville's retail sector. This legislation will hopefully aid to local law enforcement in tackling complex theft operations, protecting the economic health of the community. This bill was signed by the governor along with several other retail theft bills this cycle. The next is AB 1168, Emergency Medical Services, Pre-Hospital EMS. The intent of this bill is to enact the regulation and oversight of pre-hospital emergency medical services in California. It aimed to improve coordination between local EMS agencies and state-level bodies, ensuring consistent and effective emergency medical response across different regions. The City of Roseville supported this legislation as it allows a city or district with ambulance, transport rights, and that is a part of a joint power authority, to retain those rights when withdrawing from the JPA rather than ceding them to the county. While the bill does not directly affect Roseville, it's important to support the ability of public agencies to retain their transport rights when circumstances change. This bill was vetoed by the governor. The last bill I'll cover is SB 1418, Hydrogen Fueling Stations Expedited Review. The intent of this bill is to facilitate the expansion of hydrogen fueling infrastructure by mandating an expedited review process for the permitting and approval of new hydrogen fueling stations. It aims to support California's transition to zero emission vehicles by streamlining the approval process for hydrogen fueling stations. Although our city continues to support and will continue to invest in clean energy infrastructure, we are concerned with our ability to maintain high standards of inspection and safety due to the compressed permitting and approval process. Ensuring thorough oversight remains a priority for the city as we move towards a sustainable future. The city will have until September 30th of 2028 to become compliant with this new law. This bill was signed by the governor into law. With that, I'll pass it to Amber.
Thank you, Rob. In total, the Electric Department tracked over 150 bills this year. The governor signed 53 energy bills and vetoed 18 of the bills that the Electric Department staff had been monitoring. The three bills that I chose today are purposed to show you the breadth of kind of issues that we're tracking in the electric sector broadly. The first is AB 1465 by Assembly Member Wicks. This bill allows an air district to triple the penalties for air pollution violations if a Title V source emits one or more specified air contaminants in violation of its Title V permit. The Roseville Energy Park is a Title V source that could be impacted by these penalties if in violation. The city's goal is to follow all the conditions of our permits. Importantly, there was a letter submitted to the Journal to clarify that AB 1465 does not affect existing procedures regarding enforcement discretion, variances, or state or federal emergency declarations that may be employed to maintain grid reliability. We reviewed this letter to the Journal before it was submitted, and we believe it's an important clarification in the case of declared grid emergencies. The following bill, AB 2037 by Assembly Member Papin, Waits and Measures on Electric Vehicle Chargers. This bill authorizes a county sealer to test any electric vehicle charger operated by a public agency in the county sealer's jurisdiction. If an electric vehicle charger is found to be incorrect, the charger will be designated as out of order, and it is required to be repaired or corrected within 30 days. This bill also authorizes the County Board of Supervisors to charge an annual registration fee for the cost of inspecting and testing an electric vehicle charger. A publicly-owned electric utility like Roseville could elect to conduct these inspections on their own if they meet certain specifications and conduct these inspections every six months. This is really a consumer protection bill to ensure that electric vehicle chargers are providing the electricity that they say they are. Similar practices are employed across various sectors, including, for example, gas stations and even grocery store weighing devices. These standards for EV chargers already exist in the private sector, and this bill was really meant to extend those to the public sector. The department supports maintaining accurate operations of electric vehicle chargers, and it's not anticipated that Roseville Electric would conduct these inspections in place of the county sealer, so we are comfortable with the county sealers completing this task. And then finally, SB 1251 on mosquito abatement inspections. And this bill requires an electric utility, upon receiving a request from a mosquito abatement district, to enter into a formal vector management agreement within 180 days. This is in the case that voluntary cooperation from the electric utility has failed. This bill would require the agreement to include the location of electrical vaults that may contain standing water and a reasonable time period for the utility to provide supervised access to its vaults for surveillance, treatment, and post-treatment inspections. The Electric Department worked closely with our trade associations on this bill to limit the applicability and to apply only to locations of electrical vaults where there is reasonable belief that there is standing water. Also, amendments were included in the bill to keep utility infrastructure data provided to the districts confidential. Again, this bill sets up a process for a formal agreement in the case that a voluntary agreement cannot be reached. It does not mandate a specific inspection schedule, how inspections should be done, and no penalties are included in the legislation. Historically, the utility has not received requests from the respective agencies to do these types of inspections of our electrical vaults, and this bill was also signed by the governor. So this concludes my presentation, and now I will pass it to Noel Matic with Environmental Utilities.
Thank you, Amber. Good evening. I'd like to start off by sharing a few statistics. This year, the Environmental Utilities Department tracked 216 bills and actively engaged on 17 by either participating in industry work groups, crafting and proposing amendments, writing letters, and providing testimony in legislative committees. EU supported 11 bills, five of which were signed into law, and one was vetoed. EU opposed seven bills, and we were able to move to a support position on one and moved to a neutral position on three bills, and only one bill that we opposed was signed into law. Now, for the bills that I will cover this evening, they offer a demonstration of our advocacy efforts. This year, EU supported SB 366, which was sponsored by the California Municipal Utilities Association. This bill would have made updates to the California Water Plan, which is the state's strategic plan to sustainably manage the state's water resources by requiring the Department of Water Resources to plan for achieving additional water capacity. With the changing weather patterns and growth within the state, the water industry believes we cannot rely solely on conservation efforts, and a more balanced approach for developing new sources and expanding storage is critical. Unfortunately, due to state budget concerns, the governor vetoed this bill based on anticipated costs. Recently, CMUA voted to reintroduce this bill in 2025, and they plan on removing the portion of the bill that raised costs for the state, so making it more veto-proof, kind of. EU also supported SB 707, which creates a first-of-its-kind extended producer responsibility program for apparel and textiles. City council adopted Resolution 10278, which supports the development of an EPA program. These programs require the producers of covered products to develop and fund programs for the collection, transportation, repair, and recycling of their products. These programs help to reduce the burdens on municipalities and our ratepayers. With the passage of this bill, staff will now shift our attention to the development of the regulations to implement this new program. The last bill I will cover this evening is SB 1210, which Roseville opposed when it was introduced. This bill would have prohibited our water, wastewater, and electric connection and capacity charges from exceeding 1% of the building permit value of the housing unit, and our utilities would have been required to allow those charges to be paid over a 10-year horizon. Through our association's advocacy efforts, this measure was amended into a transparency bill requiring disclosure of these fees by utility corporations. As a publicly-owned utility, Roseville already provides this information to our public, so we were able to move to a neutral position. So all in all, we had a good year advocating on behalf of Roseville and our ratepayers, and now I will turn it back over to Mark.
Thank you, Noel. In conclusion, the bills presented tonight provide an overview and outcome of some of the more than 900 bills that the government relations team ultimately tracked, worked on, and advocated on during the legislative session. It's important to note that we do this work closely, working closely and collaboratively with the city's state and federal lobbying teams, as well as with all of the city departments to be able to carry the information and their concerns back to our advocacy efforts. Currently, the team is busy preparing for the new legislative and congressional sessions, as well as the city council's legislative platform workshop that will be held on Wednesday, January 15th, at 4:30 PM before the regularly scheduled city council meeting. This completes our presentation, and we're prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. And before I ask the council if they have any questions, I want to recognize our deputy city attorney, Megan, city attorney, city manager. Well, there you go. I'm promoting everybody, every directors, managers. Our deputy city manager, Megan Shide, has joined us, and I do want to thank Vice Mayor Bernisconie and Councilmember Mendoza, who served on the Law and Regulation Committee. So questions on the presentation? Councilmember Albert?
No questions. I have a comment later, though.
No questions.
No questions.
Okay. All right. I had a couple of questions. So with respect to the intoxicating hemp, I assume the regulation is really largely enforced by the alcohol beverage control? Is that right?
So this regulation is being overseen by the California Department of Public Health?
Public Health, okay. If we have any local costs, do you anticipate we might have any complaint-driven local costs associated with that? You could say hard to say at this point in time. All right?
It would be very hard to say at this point.
I just think, you know, we'd probably have to think about that going forward. Mr. Bakera, with respect to AB 1802, Prop 36 passed pretty convincingly, and we can do this at the January 15th legislative platform, but curious how the two mesh. If you have an answer to that now, that'd be great.
I will say that is the million-dollar question.
I will say that is the million-dollar question, and I think that was a lot of the initiative that the governor put forward trying to pass a lot of these retail theft bills prior to the election, is there was some concern that some of the bills and Prop 36 would not marry well together. And so I think that we are seeing that process work itself out right now, but happy to, and we'll definitely report on it later, as Prop 36 is funded and then implemented.
And one more question. Archuleta's bill on hydrogen fueling, do you anticipate the sealers will have any involvement in that because they do the, the Ad Commissioner sealers do our regular scales and pumps and everything else like that?
I would, I am not familiar with the term of sealers.
So the Ad Commissioner has, the Ad Commissioner has additional responsibility as the sealer. So each county has it. So they go out and make sure scales, gas pumps, a variety of things are calibrated and ensure that there's fair, the fair commerce is taking place.
Given your definition, I would venture to guess you're a hundred percent correct. They would play a part in the hydrogen fueling stations.
Okay. Amber, did you?
No, I would just, yeah, I would venture to guess, yes, probably in the future based on what we're seeing on other bills.
Yeah, so I sit on the Secoc Transportation Committee and the board, and we've had conversations about road charges in the past under AB 2037. Do you think any of the road charges are going to be part of that conversation going forward, or?
I don't know. I mean, this, under this bill, it's very specific to the county sealers ensuring accuracy of what consumers are getting, so I think that might have to be a separate issue. This is more about accuracy of things.
As the number of electric vehicles or hybrid vehicles increases, right, the amount of gas and fuel taxes goes down, so there's been presentations about that. Noel, so on AB 36, 366?
Yes.
I'm confused. The governor issued a proclamation and said our revenue is high, right? So we should use, call it a special session, to say we should, you know, protect things that are of value to California. But then we have a debt, a deficit, and he can't sign something like this. That's a rhetorical question, okay. But the real question is on AB 1210. So the one percent, exceeding one percent, is not a requirement in this bill?
No. All of, everything dealing with the public agencies was removed from the bill.
Excellent, thank you. All right, those are all my questions. Thanks for indulging me. We'll open up for public comment. Close public comment. Councilmember Albert, you mentioned that you had a comment?
Two brief things. When you were talking about the retail theft, just real quick, I got to go out on Operation Boo-Hoo with our police department and be able to get funding, because those are not cheap. You don't just have your police pay attention. It's actually a program over time, a lot of people involved, and they're very effective. And so it's nice to see some of these things pass so that we can have hopefully more funding to try to deal with it and then actually have some teeth in it so they don't see the same people again. One of the things, two things I want to comment, one is you guys are so well-respected in this whole region, it's amazing. I know when we go back for cap-to-cap, just listening to all the other jurisdictions talk about Roseville and how active we are and how we're on top of legislative issues, that says a lot, and I just want to thank you. It's kind of proud knowing that Roseville is a leader in keeping up on things that are really important to all of our cities around here. And then, Mark, I understand this is your last City Council meeting, and I know you're going to go into retirement, but I appreciate the service you've given us over the years. You've been fantastic, so thank you.
Thank you. My pleasure.
You're not coming back for the January fifteenth?
I'll be here for the January fifteenth meeting.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, this was an informational item, and thank you for, I echo Councilman Albert's comments. I think we all see and hear how incredibly valuable you are in both, on both coasts.
Thank you.
Yep. So we're going to have a public hearing, Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing on the Crawford Project. I'm going to open the public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing.
Thank you.
All right, and again, we'll have a, our assistant city manager and chief financial officer Dennis Kaufman give us the presentation.
Good evening. Thank you. This item before you tonight is a TEFRA hearing. The TEFRA is the Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, and it requires a public hearing to be held by the governing body of a jurisdiction where the project is going to be financed by tax-exempt bonds. And this TEFRA hearing is for a project called the Crawford Project, and it is about, the item is about proposed financing for the acquisition, construction, improvement of an affordable rental housing project. The location is 1130 Harvey Way in Roseville. Again, the project name is Crawford Project, and it's to be operated by Roseville Harvey 715 LP or another entity created by USA Properties or an affiliate. The project is on Harvey Way off of Fittiament Road with the closest major cross-street between Fittiament and Blue Oaks Boulevard there. The borrowers requested that California Municipal Finance Authority, who I'll refer to as CMFA, serve as the municipal issuer of the tax-exempt bonds for this project and that the bonds would not exceed seventy-five million dollars. Debt issued by the CMFA is the sole responsibility of the borrower. The city will have no financial or legal obligations or responsibilities for repayment of this debt. So the recommendation tonight for council action is to adopt the resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the CMFA for the benefit of Roseville Harvey 715 LP. And we have representatives here from CMFA and USA Properties if you have any questions about the project or the financing. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions on the presentation?
No.
All right, open for public comment with the, did you say they're here?
Yes.
Opportunity to talk? Okay. Close public comment. Close the public hearing. Ask for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item nine point one, the City Council conducted a public hearing and will consider adopting Resolution Number 24-392, approving a plan of finance, including the issuance of revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority in an aggregate outstanding principal amount not to exceed seventy-five million to finance and refinance a qualified residential rental project for the benefit of Roseville Harvey 715 LP, a California limited partnership or an affiliate, and certain other matters related thereto. With that, Mr. Mayor, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved?
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our call with Vice Mayor Berniscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendanza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haddishell.
Yes. Thanks for your presentation. All right. Item nine point two, electric backbone mitigation fee, Roseville Municipal Code amendment. I'll open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Haddishell, members of council. Sean Matcham with Roseville Electric. Here with me this evening is Joanna Kuci. We have a brief presentation on this agenda item. We're recommending City Council's approval on an update to our backbone mitigation fee. Joanna is going to step through a presentation here of the details, and then we can answer any questions to Councilmember.
Good evening. As Sean said, we are presenting on a electric backbone mitigation fee. This is an update to the municipal code. So the electric backbone is the high-voltage part of Roseville Electric's distribution system. So this includes things like substations and high-voltage lines. The backbone fee recovers the cost to install and upgrade infrastructure to that system from new development. So anytime that new development is approved and built in the city, a backbone fee is charged to recover the costs of that new development. Our fee is KVA-based. This impacts new customers or new capacity, so if a customer adds capacity, it would also be charged to them. This is a forward-looking fee, so we look at development that's coming down the pike and the projects that are needed to support those projects. And then this allows us to clearly administer the fee as capacity comes online. So the capital projects that are related to the backbone system, so we review our capital plan and look at the backbone-serving projects. So there are three projects currently being collected for backbone fee. Sierra Vista Substation Transformer Edition, seventy-five percent of this project is allocated to new development, while twenty-five percent is allocated to existing development. The Creteview Substation and SISKV extension is the same. It's seventy-five percent towards new development, and twenty-five percent is used to support existing customers and load. And then the Vernon Substation Upgrade, this is an upgrade to the Vernon Substation. Twenty-five percent of that is intended for new development, while seventy-five percent supports the existing system. So based on that and the funds collected to date, we're looking to collect thirteen point five million dollars over the remaining development of the city. In addition to changing the projects that are included in the backbone as we move along and projects roll off, we also did an increase. We evaluated the amount of energy that homes are using, and with the implementation of all-electric homes and electric vehicle charging, we are increasing the KVA that is allocated to new homes, both on the multifamily and single-family side. I think we have that on the next page. Yes. So our current fee on the residential side, it's a per-home or per-dwelling, depending on if it's single-family or multifamily. The KVA assumed on our current fee is five point five for single-family and four for multifamily. The commercial backbone fee is charged per KVA of the design, so basically the unit on that is one. Currently, our per-KVA cost is ninety-two eighty-two. On a residential, single-family home, that's five hundred and ten dollars. On a residential, multifamily, it's three hundred and seventy-one. And then on commercial, per-KVA, it is the ninety-two eighty-two. The proposed fee for the backbone is, as you can see, the KVA has increased on the residential side, so instead of a five point five KVA assumed, on the residential, single-family, it's six, and the residential, multifamily is four point three five, and commercial, industrial, again, is a single unit of one. We are proposing a new backbone fee of ninety-eight point seven zero. For residential, single-family, that's five hundred and ninety-two dollars, or an increase per home of eighty-two dollars. And then on the residential, multifamily, it's four twenty-nine, which is an increase of fifty-eight dollars per dwelling. On the residential side, since we did increase the capacity needs, or the capacity needs of homes has increased, the increase is sixteen percent on the residential side and six percent on the per-KVA side for commercial. So the schedule on this is we're here for first reading today on November twentieth. Next up will be second reading on this item on December eighteenth, and then the fee implementation would be thirty days later on January eighteenth, 2024. On October twenty-second, we did take this to the Public Utilities Commission, who recommended approval of the proposed fee, and staff recommends that City Council introduce for first reading, approving amendments to the Roseville Municipal Code regarding the electric backbone mitigation fee. And we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, council, questions? Councilmember Albert?
I just want to get clarification on the fee. For future development homes, that's the fee. Does that include houses that are already approved and specific plans, just haven't been built yet? Does the fee get, happen at the point they pull a permit? Is that the moment, and does that affect everybody?
Yeah, so when they pull the permit is when the fee is charged.
So it affects all new homes from January eighteenth on? Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Opening for public comment? Close public comment and close the public hearing. And unless there's any other questions or comments, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item nine point two, the City Council conducted a public hearing and will consider introducing for first reading the ordinance-amending section 4.54.010, 4.54.020, 4.54.040, and 4.54.050 of the Roseville Municipal Code regarding electric backbone mitigation fee. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved? Second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our call with Vice Mayor.
I think Councilmember Mendanza got the second in there.
No, no. I'll give it to Pauline.
We'll give it to Tracy.
Councilwoman Rakucci.
We'll start with Vice Mayor Berniscony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendanza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haddishell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item nine point three, downtown specific plan, Old Town Pizza Economic Development Incentive Agreement. I'll open the public hearing. And, wait a second, I need to get this right. Our economic development manager, Mr. Anguiano, and our economic development director.
I'll take that promotion, thank you.
A lot of budget adjustments tonight with these promotions.
All right. Can we have a presentation?
All right, well, good evening, Mayor Haddishell, members of the council. Again, I'm Wayne Wiley, economic development manager for the city of Roseville, and I have to say I'm excited to be before you tonight regarding this item, as this has been a project site that the city has been focused on for quite some time. It's been identified in our downtown specific plan as a catalyst site, and it's really in a prominent location that, once activated, will add to the vibrancy of our downtown. So with all that being said, I'm happy to present the recommendation to provide an economic incentive to Old Town Pizza for the development of 324 Vernon Street. So first, before I get into the specifics of the request, I do want to just provide a little context regarding the project site and the history of the parcel. So as you see here, the site is located at 32324 Vernon Street, directly across from the city's town square and adjacent to the city office building at 316. Now, the site is developed with a nineteen thousand square foot post office, and as you know, the subject site was previously owned by the city and leased to the United States Postal Service. And then back in 2019, prior to the expiration of the post office lease, the city went out with an RFP for the sale and development of the site, consistent with the vision of the downtown specific plan. And through that process, we did select a proposal and subsequently sold the property to Lennox Hills LLC to develop a mixed-use project at the site. However, due to market conditions and economic uncertainty, the site was never developed, and the property recently sold to Old Town Pizza in September of this year. Now, as you're aware, Old Town Pizza is a very successful, locally-owned business that has been a part of our community for close to a decade. And based on their continued success and the terms of their current lease expiring, they were looking for an opportunity to relocate and expand their business in Roseville. And so based on this, they purchased the subject site with the intent of renovating the building into a new restaurant. And provided here, just for perspective, I've included a photo of the existing building in the top-left corner of the page, and then a rendering or conceptual design of the proposed project in the bottom-right corner. And as you can see, the proposed project would be a great addition and really help activate a prominent location within our downtown that has sat vacant for a number of years. So shown here are some more additional renderings of the site, and I do want to just highlight that these are just conceptual designs, and so they still would require planning approval. But as proposed, it is anticipated that the existing building will be modified and increased by approximately five thousand square feet to include a pizza restaurant, rooftop dining area, a tap room, event space, a to-go counter, and one of my aspects of the project that I'm looking forward to most is a speakeasy in the basement of the site, and that would be part of a potential future phase. So with this relocation, I also want to note that they will almost triple their square footage from their existing restaurant. Now, as you can imagine, with these modifications, substantial work will need to be completed, which brings us to the current request before you tonight, in which Old Town Pizza has asked for support from the city to help offset remediation costs. Specifically, a hundred thousand dollar economic incentive is requested to offset the costs related to the abatement of hazardous material, with this payment being provided at the completion of the project following issuance of a CFO or Certificate of Occupancy. And just for background, I should note that when we initially sold the property, the city established a CIP allocating funds to offset remediation costs for development of a mixed-use project. costs for development of a mixed-use project that I mentioned. And now OTP is requesting an incentive from the city, consistent with the terms agreed to with the previous owner. So at this time, because the project never came to fruition, staff proposes to utilize funding from the existing CIP if the proposed economic incentive is approved, which in turn would not impact the city's general fund. And then regarding the last bullet, it's important to note that the current request is not only consistent with the intent of seeing the site developed, but it is aligned with the city's economic development strategy, council's goals, and the Downtown Specific Plan vision. So finally, on this slide, I think it's important to highlight some of the economic impacts of the project, including Old Town Pizza's significant investment into the community. And so you can see here, it's estimated $6.5 million in capital investment. And as I look at that number, that 6.5 includes building improvements and equipment purchases, but it does not include the property acquisition of about $1.75 million. So OTP's investment in the community is over $8 million. In addition to that, there's other economic impacts related to job creation, sales tax, property tax generation, and then additional indirect benefits, which can include increased demand for local food suppliers, increased property values, and increased traffic and customer flow to the area. And so with all that being said, you can see by and large, this project will serve as a catalyst for further development in our downtown as envisioned by the specific plan. So with all that being said, in conclusion, staff is recommending the two items before you tonight, that we hold a public hearing to review the economic development incentive agreement, and that we adopt the resolution to approve the incentive agreement with Old Town Pizza. So that concludes my presentation. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions from council.
Also have any questions?
I did, Wayne. You said that they're having, they'll, excuse me, they'll have an event in the basement, but that's in the future. Are they planning something on the rooftop, rooftop entertainment and?
Yeah, so they would have seating for dining on the rooftop. And what I was alluding to is Phase 2 with the potential speakeasy in the basement.
Okay. And, oh, another question. I see that, I know an artist rendering is just an artist rendering, but it looks similar to what we have now. Does that, is that a good question maybe to ask the applicant? I know that's not what's coming up right now, but it is about looking at what it does for, well, not only economic development, but kind of our goals for the city, that it has a lot of historic significance to look like what we have now.
Absolutely. So we do have project proponents here, including the architect for the project, but I can note that they were mindful of the existing architecture of the building. And as you alluded to, they kept a sense of that in the, in the architecture of the new proposed building.
Thank you.
And as Councilwoman Ricucci, as you noted, this is conceptual.
Uh huh. That's exact, yeah.
You know, once they get in there and start looking around, things might change. So I don't have any questions. We'll open it up for public comment, and I'd invite the applicant to come forward if they'd like.
Hello, my name's Dawn Cedarlin. I'm the CEO of Old Town Pizza. And I just want to start by saying thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak in front of the council tonight. So I did want to give you a brief history of Old Town Pizza. We originally opened in a small daylight basement in Old Town Auburn in 1999. Our family, we love pizza, so we bought it. We bought the, we purchased the business in November of 2022. We were then able to expand and grow, and we opened a second location in Lincoln in 2004. And as we continued to grow, we knew we wanted our next location to be in Roseville. It took us several, several years to find the right spot for our next expansion, which is the building we currently occupy over on Church Street. And we did that in 2014. We partnered up with architect Ed Mojica of Mojica Architectural Corporation and Rod Thayer of Omni Construction, both local Roseville businesses, to create a unique Old Town Pizza restaurant. That project was the largest investment we had ever made, and our company had to borrow a portion of the money to pay for the $1.2 million tenant improvements. Up to that point, our company had been debt-free, and so it was quite a stretch to fund that project for us. We were able to open our doors in Roseville in December of 2015, and we've been proudly serving the Roseville community since then. We're grateful for the support from the City of Roseville during the planning and construction of that project, and the support from the community to make it a success. As a company, we decided we didn't want to continue to make substantial financial improvements in other people's properties, so we set out on a path to acquire our own properties. We started in Lincoln as we were nearing the end of our 15-year lease. We acquired a vacant building on the corner of Lincoln Boulevard and Sixth Street. Again, we partnered up with Ed and Rod and to create our current Old Town Pizza Restaurant there and Slice Beer Company. We opened that new location in September of 2020, and Slice Beer opened shortly after, in November of 2020. During COVID, we built an outdoor dining pavilion in the Gold Country Fairgrounds in Auburn, and we opened up that in February of 2021. We then acquired a building in Auburn to replace our original location, because that was at the end of our 20-year lease. We opened the doors of our new Auburn location in May of 2022, and now we're at the end of the first 10-year lease in our current Roseville location, and we're doing it all over again. Ed and Rod have been our partners on every project we've had over the last 10 years. It's been a truly rewarding partnership with them, and we all work together to create beautiful additions to the communities that we serve. We're currently celebrating our 25th-year anniversary, and I believe that our new Roseville location will carry us through for the next 25 years. As a company, we're very proud of the culture we've created, and that includes a vision and a set of core values that allow for continuous improvement of the experience for our guests, our team, and our community. We have a strong commitment to our communities, and we continually look for ways to create and say yes to win-win opportunities. That is why we have long-term partnerships with all the chambers, the SPCA, the service clubs, the schools, and many, many other organizations. As business owners, we're financially conservative, and we have saved enough money to partially cover the cost of the new Roseville project. Our company structure is made up of four entities. We have BBC Family Eatery, which is Old Town Pizza. We have Slice Beer Company. We have Old Town Lincoln Properties, and now we have Old Town Roseville Properties. That's the reason why you're going to see different names on some of the paperwork. The companies share a significant common ownership among the four entities, and we have expanded our ownership group to include several of our senior management staff. Acquiring the Roseville property on Vernon Street and renovating it to be the future home of Old Town Pizza and Slice is our largest and most ambitious project to date, and as you heard, total estimated project cost of about $8 million. It took a lot of negotiation, a lot of compromise to be able to make the decision to move forward and to meet our lender's requirements on this one. The possibility of receiving some funding from the City of Roseville to help offset the remediation and abatement is a huge factor in making it financially viable for us. We first started looking for property in Roseville. We knew we wanted to be on Vernon Street, because we consider this the historic heart of Roseville. We just simply couldn't find a space that worked for our concept or that we could fit into our budget at that time. So when the Roseville Post Office property first became available, we looked into it, but we realized we would not be able to create and operate what the city wanted for that location. Years later, it became available again, and we got very excited. This time, with the city's help, with our partners, and Ed and Rod's help, and a lender that believes in us, we were able to make the decision to move forward. So Wayne said the Roseville Post Office property is about three times bigger than our current space. This is going to allow us to almost double the number of dine-in seats, and more importantly, give us the space to expand our kitchen and our process areas. This is going to allow our team to more effectively improve on our good-as-gold experience that we want for our guests and for our team. It's also going to allow Slice Beer Company to expand its taproom experience beyond Lincoln into Roseville. The basement space, again, future projects, possible event space in the speakeasy, we're excited about that, too. And then lastly, the addition of the third-floor year-round rooftop experience is going to be really incredible for everybody. We're looking forward to an even closer partnership with the city and with the downtown groups and all the organizations that contribute to creating and evolving the downtown vision. We'll continue with our long history of wanting to be part of all the celebrations and all the events happening in Roseville, and look forward to making an even bigger impact. We definitely want to bring the fun. So again, want to thank the City Council for being great partners on our previous project and now on this new project. The specific time and help that Gina, Wayne, Tracy, and Scott have provided is very much appreciated. They and others at the city, they've all been available, quick to reply, and have made it clear that we are welcome and wanted in the city. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? If not, I'll close public comment, close the public hearing. Inquire if the council has any useful comments or questions?
I do. I have a comment. We are so excited you guys chose downtown. I frequent your Business Weekly and with a bunch of other people every week. And I used to be a restaurant owner downtown, as you know, and I think this is just the ideal spot for you. Thank you so much for taking the post office. When we had originally sold it for a concept that would fit in downtown, they were planning to remove the building, and my word, did that get some backlash on all of us. And so I'm excited that you're keeping the historic, original building. You're going to have challenges with that, I'm sure, but I'm really glad that you're keeping it, because I know the community, especially our historic society, is going to just love that that building is, is being reused instead of removed completely. So thank you so much for that, and good luck. We're all going to be cheering you on.
Well, I think your motto, you always say golden pizza, or what is?
Good as gold.
Good as gold. Well, your team is good as gold, too, and you've really proven yourself over time, Dawn. That was an amazing recap, probably the best one I've heard up here in years. We're really thrilled with the location. It's good to see your team. I haven't seen in a long time. I think that this is a perfect demonstration of why we have these funds available. It doesn't do the city any good to have this building sit vacant for years. So I'm glad that you're taking the risk to be downtown, and I think it will pay off for all of us. So welcome. We're glad you're reinvesting.
Vice Mayor, I mean, Councilmember Ricucci. Do you have any comment?
Just maybe just added on what I was, was talking about earlier. Very happy, love going to your Old Town Pizza now. It's in historic Roseville. You just moved around the corner and came over here, and having outside, you know, the patio upstairs and potential downstairs, I think it's very exciting. And I think with your name is Old Town Pizza, it gives, you are a historic flair, and you're in a building that's historic and means a lot to the new people in Roseville and people who've been here all their lives, like myself. And Krista, a taste of history that continues, and we appreciate that.
Councilmember Madonza?
I just echo what everybody else has said. I think my wife and I, she, my wife has several family members in Auburn, and we just remember some of our earlier dates, 20-some-odd years ago, when we, you guys were in that, over there by Offlannys, navigating those stairs and trying to get to your place. It was almost a reward. If you got up the stairs, you got rewarded with pizza, but not necessarily getting out of there. And I think you guys took a couple weeks' pay on the arcades, and they may have been fixed, but I won't, I won't, I won't razz you too much on that. But watching your expansion over the years and working with you on a, on a professional level in other areas, it's, it's just awesome that you've invested so much already on the Church Street location, and having you down here, especially across from the square, with so much that goes on and what's planned for down here and, and all of the other progress and improvements that are going to be coming forward over the next, you know, five or 10 years. You've timed it right. You're going to be, you know, ripe for a lot of new people to experience what all of us up here already know, that you're a wonderful company. You give so much back to so many organizations. And I know everybody else has spoken about what they're excited about. I'm excited about the pizza by the slice at the window. That's just going to be huge. I think that's going to be a lot of fun, and I just can't be more excited that you're going to be down here. So thank you for reinvesting again on the other side of downtown Roseville.
I'll echo the comments of everyone else. What I appreciate about Old Town Pizza is they celebrate the community they're in, you know? I was super excited when you opened over in historic Old Town, because we didn't have to go to Lincoln to get that deliciousness. But, you know, you got a, there's a vault in there, there's all sorts of, you know, what do they call those? Easter eggs, right? Where you look around and you see, and no doubt that will happen across the street. In addition to celebrating community, I'm sure a lot of entrepreneurs started by slinging, you know, being waiters, waitresses, cooks, and everything else in your establishment. So like my councilmembers, I'm super excited for, and I know your architect, he did this little project down the street called the Noshery.
Small one, yeah.
You know, so super excited to see what happens, and it can't open soon enough. So with that, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 9.3, the City Council conducted a public hearing and will consider adopting Resolution Number 24393, approving a City of Roseville Economic Development Incentive Agreement, by and between the City of Roseville and Old Town Roseville Pizza LLC Wholesale Corporation, and authorizing the city manager to execute on behalf of the City of Roseville. With that, may I please have a motion?
So move. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Beresconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Madonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Ricucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haddishell.
Yes, thanks.
Motion passes.
The opportunity in the evening for a second, we'll open for second public comment on non-agenda items. Anybody who wants to comment on items that weren't on tonight's agenda? All right. We'll start with the council. Oh, wait. City manager, do you have anything?
No further reports, Mayor. Thank you.
Your turn.
No, I'm glad to have my voice back. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Ricucci, would you start us off with any committee reports?
Just a couple, Mayor. Had a regional water authority meeting, and again, just similar to what we're talking here with legislation of what's happening, and, and also we've had elections times and, you know, kind of looking into the future for regional water that we're a member of. And also had a meeting with Northern California Power Association, and with them, we're working with, it was, it's time for contracts of employees, so it's a more business in that respect. But again, we're looking to make sure that we're a lean machine and, and our employees are, are taken care of also. And then jumping to something that I was able to do that was a little bit different. I've done it in the past. Usually I've had the opportunity to go to elementary schools and read to children, and this was kind of like that. But I was asked to go to some Girl Scouts groups, they're seven-year-olds, and the Daisy Girl Scouts, and their leader was Shannon McEwen, and I was at Midu Library. And it's the cutest thing to have these, these kids ask you questions. So they ask, you know, where do I work? And, you know, and my, my kind of assignment was they're trying to work on their democracy badge, and so about government. So trying to figure out, what are you going to tell a seven-year-old, and how do you explain things? But it worked out really well, because I was trying to explain how we're a full-service city, but, but in language like being healthy, healthy, healthy and safe. So I hit on healthy and safe, and they could understand that when they asked, I tell them that the councilmembers here have other jobs. And like in my past, I'm a registered nurse, and as soon as I said that and worked in a hospital, then we're, every, every one of those little girls told me what happened to them when they went to the hospital. So we had all kinds of conversations, but they were fun and really learned a little bit about, about city government and what kind of we, what we do. They liked the idea that we had 88 parks and gave them a little map that had the parks and also all our, our bike trails. But I think it just shows you our life in Roseville and all the different groups that help kids and make them strong, and they're our new, they'll be our future citizens for Roseville. But, you know, kids say the darnedest. But, you know, kids say the darndest things, so they ask everything, and they are just a total delight. So I have to thank the scoutmaster who asked me to, you know, be there.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Just a few items. So I had the opportunity to join my fellow councilmembers at the SPCA groundbreaking for the new veterinary center. That was a lot of fun. Got a break in the weather just in time. And then my little dog Brisket and I attended the Hound and Hooch event at House Divide, which also supported the new veterinary and foster care center for the SPCA, and several of my councilmembers were at that as well. So lots of things for the SPCA going on. And then many of us just got back from being in DC last week. I had the honor of joining our mayor and several members of our city management team, all working together to advance our Placer's legislative agenda. This is really a good trip. I think it's their third or fourth year, I think it's their fourth year. If not, someone will correct me later. And everybody gets together, there's many regional companies, government agencies, community partners like PCWA and Kaiser, Sutter, Sierra College, and just many others. And, you know, unlike other advocacy trips like Cap to Cap and others like that, this is an opportunity for us on a regional level to discuss and address the issues that we may be having, but also to provide pathways forward and discuss opportunities where we can collaborate, you know, and maybe be better or do things better or work together to advance initiatives and projects that truly do affect us on a regional level and not so much on a broader state level, which I think is important as we grow and other cities around us grow, having that collaboration, you know, becomes extremely important. It's all about building those relationships. And kudos also, our city manager attended, and he participated in a city manager panel discussion and again reminded all of us why we're so lucky to have him as our city manager. So way to, you know, raise the bar for the rest of the city managers in the region. But he did a fabulous job, and it was just a very, very good advocacy trip, and I think that a lot of good will come from that in the coming year. So that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Albert.
I didn't have any committee meetings since our last council meeting, but like many of you, attended a lot of community events. I was able to go to the fundraiser for the Roseville Theater Arts Academy. That was a lot of fun. Give an excuse to wear a tuxedo. And the Gathering of Hope for the Gathering Inn, they provide a lot of homeless services for all of South Placer and their main facilities right here in Roseville downtown. So attended that. Wayfinder Family Services has a new office in Roseville, and they serve all of Placer County, and they're actually a statewide organization. And I got to go to their grand opening, and it was amazing just the different services they provide for adoption and foster care, all kinds of counseling for children up to adult age and family counseling. And it's something that we really need here in the county, and the county's really excited to have them. And I was super excited because my daughter-in-law happens to be leading that office now, so that was kind of a fun thing to attend. And the last thing I just want to mention is, well, actually, I went to Cub Scout, the Cub Scouts Troop 507, and your comment reminded me, these are our future leaders and these scouts, it's just an amazing organization. They learn so many things that you don't learn in school. And, but yes, when they open with questions, it gets interesting. I was asked how old I am, which I hate that question, and I said, "How old do you think I am?" And the boy said, "80." So, yeah, it was fun, though. But they had some really good questions about how the city works, and it is, it's an interesting process to try to tone it down to a nine-year-old, and you had even younger, so that it can understand what it is you do and not think it's too boring anyway. And the last thing I just want to say was, you know, is we're heading into Thanksgiving, and somebody had mentioned something to me a while back, and it really has me thinking, always around the Thanksgiving time, that there's people in our lives that we're thankful for, people that have made a big difference in our life. And I'll bet you, if you reached out to them during Thanksgiving and just let them know that, it would make a big difference. That's the giving part of Thanksgivings.
All righty. Vice Mayor Beresconi.
Yeah, a few things to note. A week ago Friday, the mayor and I attended the Ignite Veterans Expo. It was the first expo of that kind across the street at the Venture Lab. It was attended by business owners who are veterans, and so that was pretty awesome. Definitely a wonderful display of local business folks who served time in their military and now have translated those skills into being business owners. So that was really nice. I'm glad the mayor was there. They asked me to say a few words, and Sergeant Nicole G.'s sister was there, Misty, and she spoke about the work that they're doing on behalf of her sister's foundation. While the mayor was out, I attended a ribbon cutting at a newer multifamily apartment complex, Prospera, on our western boundary off of Hayden Parkway. Many of those units are affordable, lower income, they're absolutely beautiful, and they're all occupied. I attended last Friday, the ride-along with the police department invited me. I spent Friday afternoon on their Operation Stuff 'Em. So if you're planning on taking anything that anybody, that you don't pay for, I would not encourage you to do that at all. We learned what kind of trends these organized retail theft folks, what they do inside these stores, and they had an app that the loss prevention folks use. So if they're somebody at Lowe's or Home Depot or at the mall, stores at the mall, they are communicating real-time with our police officers and taking photos of those who are suspicious, and they know what the trends look like. So that was really informative, and I made sure to pass along my thanks to the team who had me out on Friday. I will, in the mayor's absence, has another meeting Monday morning, December 2nd. So I will be speaking on behalf of the council at the Light the World Giving Machines at the mall. Those start December 2nd. They will be there through the month. You probably have seen them before if you've been to the mall, but it's a great, they choose a handful of nonprofits, and you can give right there on the spot. So we'll see those during the holidays. I'm sure that most of us will be at the Tommy Apostolis Shopping Spree on December 7th. We all got a note, I believe, that they need more volunteers. That's December 7th at Kohl's, anytime that morning that you're free.
What time? Like 4:30?
Yeah, I think from 5:00 AM, you could be used probably from 5:00 AM to 7:00 AM. And so I would encourage all of you to, those are great ways to get into the holiday spirit. And again, that's December 7th. I think they start at 5:00 AM at the Kohl's on Fairway. So that's all I have for this evening.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. You know, we're going to start, there's a reoccurring theme here, and we've all had this opportunity, but yesterday I had an incredible treat. So I was asked by the second, by the second-grade teacher, Mrs. Hall at Woodbridge Elementary, to come talk. They've been talking about government, so I had an opportunity to go to her class. For those at home and those in the audience who don't know this, and Vice Mayor Beresconi and Councilwoman Rakucci know this, this school was built in 1935. You have to see the door. The fifth graders, when they graduate, they ring the bell, they ring out. This school is named after two people in our community, Dr. Woodbridge, who was a physician for the Southern Pacific, but more importantly, his wife Cora, who was elected to the California, she was the first woman elected to the California Assembly, and she was elected three times. They had, you know, when I asked Councilwoman Rakucci, I said, "Did you go to St. Rose's where you..." She said, "I went a couple of years to Woodbridge." And I said, "Well, I saw the fountains, which are made out of tile, are absolutely fabulous." And I said, "I went to your school this morning, and it was just a delight. The kids had a song, and it was," you know, as I talked to Councilmember Rakucci, she used the word precious, and I think that's it. As Councilman Albert said, "They asked some interesting questions. I asked them what they thought the mayor did. The key thing I heard from them was help." And that's, you know, that's what we do, and that's what we, how we connect with the community. So that was a real treat and delight. Earlier today, I had the Capitol Corridor Joint Powers Authority, that's the entity that runs the commuter rail from Auburn all the way down to the Bay Area. I will be the chairman of the Capitol Corridor Joint Powers Authority in '25 and '26. The, I had the SECOC Board Member Meeting, Board of Directors Meeting, and they asked to pass along, they had a presentation on their regional indicators dashboard and 2024 Progress Report, which was filled with information, trend information on housing and the economy and where the economy is the strongest, you know, both pre-pandemic and post-pandemic. So they asked, and you could, there's a link online, and we can, we can share that, but they asked that, do we share that news with everyone in the community? And like Councilmember Mendoza, I had an opportunity last week to go to Washington, DC at a very historic time, as the president-elect came to visit the president at the White House. Why go to Washington, DC? Well, I think it, for me, it was encapsulated by the sense that we had James Zandres Zanstra, the legislative director for Kevin Kiley there, who could give us a lay of the land. And one of the questions I asked him is, "Well, you know, there seems to be a partisan tenure out there. Will you be working with your colleagues across the alleys?" He says, "Absolutely, we have to," right, "to get various pieces of omnibus legislation advanced." So he talked about the key committees that Congressman Kiley is on and encouraged us to his chagrin to submit some community project funding requests. The other aspect we had is we had Rich Gold with Holland and Knight, who gave us a present, gave us an overview of the election demographics and real-time, right, real-time cabinet appointments that were happening, and his insight. One of the nice, really nice things was we had Major General HD Jake Palumbo from Beal talk about the economic importance of that. We had our Sierra College folks there and our education folks talking about regional workforce trends. Sierra College has received a grant of $198,000 for cybersecurity. So, you know, these are things, in addition to building the relationships, there were 103 folks that went on this trip, and this is really an opportunity, you know, one of the, we started off with Tammy Powers with Sutter and Kim Menzel with Kaiser, talking about the hospital system and collaboration. So it's a real insight there. And then the other, the other really valuable thing was that we had Clifton Taylor talk about, the panel was cost for building in California versus everywhere else, and we had a very entertaining presentation by Carl Eckhart, who's with the National Association of Home Builders on that. So very valuable trip. As I said, 103 people went, and that was a good opportunity. I want to wish everybody, Councilman Albert, thanks for teeing this up, but I want to wish everybody a very happy, healthy, not pizza-free, but Thanksgiving. And in addition to what Vice Mayor Beresconi mentioned, the tree lighting is December 5th, and then some of us will be sleepy, but I think we'll be in the parade on December 7th. So the holiday parade is December 7th this year.
Yeah, it's not this week, like it would have been.
Yeah, they moved it.
They moved it.
I thought I missed it, but we moved it, so.
I didn't know that.
Yeah. With that, we are, I will be at the Association of California Water Agency Conference on December 4th. We will not meet on December 4th, which is normally when we meet. Our next meeting will be December 11th, is that correct? And until that time, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Okay.